Okay, call this meeting to order or back to order at 6:38. We are in executive session for the purpose of talking about security and collective bargaining. Welcome, everybody. We begin with public input. As you guys are learning, you can speak about anything you would like. If anybody would like to speak, please raise your hand. Please raise your hand, just identify your name and where you live, and then you can speak about anything you'd like. Go ahead, sir. Sure, yeah, we'll give you...
I got that one.
Want to take this one?
Yeah, I got it. Here, we'll use this pass, sir. We don't have a...
Because we're not using it for the phone, yeah.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. John Barret to Dogwood Lane. Since our last school committee meeting on 7th February, there was a number of parents here who expressed some very deeply held concerns about a number of different topics. My buddy Costas back here talked about the COVID regime as well as the social justice curriculum, and asked very specific questions and asked for very specific results from that meeting. In that intervening 30 days, no one has contacted Costas to have a meeting, and so he has gotten absolutely zero feedback on his specific requests regarding the COVID regime and regarding the social justice curriculum. So therefore, good evening. My statement will be very brief. It'll be under three minutes. Myself, or I, and the eight residents of North Reading who have signed the addendum sheet, seen here, are delivering to each of you a letter of intent to file $1 million claims against each of your liability insurance policies for a total of $6 million. I want to summarize the punchline of these letters because they're very long. The school committee has five business days from this meeting until 14 March to take the following actions. Stop promoting the "vaccine" in all schools, to include signage, emails, announcements, electronic displays, and printed materials. End all COVID-19 pool testing programs within all schools. Cease promoting the COVID-19 flu as a grave threat to children and their families. Next, and almost, and not any less important, permanently halt in writing enforcement of all policies that require universal masking and masking without parental consent. Pass a school board resolution allowing parents the right to peruse, examine, and approve or disapprove all social justice material that the school board intends to introduce into the schools. This includes access to the book listings of all school libraries. And finally, pass a school board resolution allowing parents the option to opt their children out of social justice curriculum they deem to be inappropriate. Responding to these letters is the first step in a process, and we expect you to formally respond one way or the other. If you fail to act on the conditions within these letters of intent within five business days, that being 14 March, we will file these claims against your insurance companies, then pursue further legal actions within the judicial system and using our substantial legal standing. You may wonder why Boris Johnson, Michelle Wu, and others recently did a 180-degree turn. I can assure you, it wasn't an epiphany or a change of heart. Do your research, please. Dr. Daley, you have been given all of the information and data necessary to make your decision. I recommend today that you share the data I sent with you to the rest of the school committee. The emails containing links that I sent you and the notarized affidavit, which is a legal document, of our meeting on 18 February are otherwise known as evidence and other evidence that we are collecting. Please remember these words as I depart, as I deliver these letters. Regulations, mandates, edicts, and CDC guidelines and DC mandates are not law, and they cannot supersede or violate state, federal, or international laws. Per Marbury versus Madison SCOTUS ruling in 1803, regulations which are in violation of the Constitution are considered repugnant. And remember this, please do your research as well, the Nuremberg defense is not a viable defense. Thank you for your time, and I'm going to exercise my First Amendment right in this place of public accommodation to personally deliver these letters.
Please raise your hand. Go ahead, sir. Mr. Barret, would you hand the microphone over, please? Thank you. You know where echoes come from? I don't...
Drew DePatty, 6th Flint Street. It is time to eradicate critical race theory. And please don't tell me that CRT is not taught. It is true, there is no course entitled CRT. However, the tenants of this racist, divisive, hateful ideology permeates the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Program, DEI for short, which has been constructed to form how our children view race, among other goals. And the very cynical catch-all term "social justice" is used to justify and ram these dangerous ideas into our kids' brains. Six years ago, just before we put an offer on the house on 6th Flint Street, a dear teacher friend of mine did some quick research and let me know about the impressive rankings and scores of the North Reading Public School System. This was quite reassuring as I was about to make a $500,000 offer on the home where my new wife Doris and I were going to raise a family. It was also good to know that the $8,000 annual property tax bill was producing good results in the school system. I have always paid up for quality. But over the last several years, since Doris got pregnant and my son Bronx was born, and as I began to pay attention to what was going on in the schools, I grew very concerned. It became apparent that the school board and superintendent ushered through the tired, old, race-based identity politics of the 20th century under the umbrella of the DEI social justice curriculum. I want to proclaim tonight that no children in our school system shall get their identity from this cancerous DEI social justice program. My son Bronx gets his identity from Almighty God, who made him in his image and likeness and knew him before he is formed in Doris's womb. He gets his identity from this great country founded by God-fearing, freedom-loving men who declared that we are endowed by our Creator with the inalienable rights of life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. He gets his identity from being born out of love into a loving home with a mom and dad who have their own personal history. I come from a blue-collar lineage. I am the grandson of two WWII veterans, one who worked for 40 years as a machinist at GE and Lynn, and one who worked for 40 years as a brakeman in the US Railroad in South Boston. My wife Doris is a daughter of Haiti who immigrated here from that black-majority country at the age of 19 to pursue the freedom and limitless opportunity of this great land. My son will know who he is because he will know God. He will know this mighty nation, and he will know his loving family. He will not be corrupted by CRT in the DEI social justice program in this school system. The school board and superintendent do not have to go down in history as the racist, hateful regime that brought this poison into our school and into our kids' precious minds and souls. You can right your wrong here tonight by standing with me and adopting these condemnations. Never again to insinuating that a child's white father is oppressing a child's black mother. Never again to insinuating a black child is less capable than a white child. Never again to insinuating a black child needs government help to be successful, for that child has the greatness of God inside of them. Never again to emphasizing race as the only important issue in our society. And finally, never again to promoting the idea that this great country is inherently racist without hope of redemption. Thank you.
Okay, here ain't none. We're going to move on to the student report. So we have Shivvi Shrikanth here tonight on the computer, and I hope you guys can hear her here, but before I turn it over, Shivvi, I just want to congratulate you. Your mother is very proud, very justifiably proud. You are, if people don't know, Shivvi was awarded one of the 150, I believe, Coca-Cola scholarships in the country, and there's something like 68,000 people that applied for this Coca-Cola sponsorship. And just to be clear, 68,000 is, you know, really some of the top students in the country already, so it is truly an honor, and so congratulations, you certainly deserve it. We've seen you on the school committee many times. You've been an important part of a lot of discussions, and so congratulations to you first and foremost, so...
Thank you so much. I didn't realize you told people about it. So, yeah, thank you again for having me. I'm just going to talk a little bit about what's been going on recently at the high school, especially with the end of winter sports and the coming of playoffs in the next week. So, North Reading has four winter sports teams in playoffs right now, and tracks going to Nationals this week, which is really exciting. Girls' basketball has their game tonight, and girls' hockey has theirs Tuesday. Boys' basketball has theirs on Wednesday, and boys' hockey is also going to playoffs Tuesday. And both boys and girls from the North Reading track team are going to Nationals this week, which is also very exciting. Sports awards were going to be this week, but they were pushed to next week, and after that will be the start of captains' practices and tryouts for spring sports. And then moving on to the arts and masters, Notorious had a record-breaking performance at the ICHSA this past weekend, and Notorious now holds the highest-record score in this competition, earning 452 points out of 465, which is really, really cool. Notorious now advances to the Mechanics Hall in Worcester on March 12 at 3:00 PM, and I think that's open to everybody who wants to see. And then the Theater Guild Competition for Masters is also coming up on the 19th. They were able to perform this past weekend, and they will be competing in this one-act play competition on the 19th, and their play is "The Terrible Inference." Moving on to academics and extracurriculars, North Reading's Academic Decathlon Team competed at the very competitive state championships on Saturday, and they won a few prestigious awards. In the honors division, Jonathan Park won fifth place in math, fourth place in science, fourth place in language, and fourth place in essay. And then Krista Costa won fifth place in science, fifth place in language, silver for essay, and won the award for being the team's highest scorer. Talia Toby won the silver for interview, gold for speech, and she took home the gold for the highest combined score in all subjective events. And Acadia Cordero was the team's highest-scoring alternate. For more extracurriculars, ECO Team is currently running their biggest event, Tree Plenish, and they're selling saplings to any member of North Reading, and the deadline to buy those are on Thursday. And moving on to more academic matters, course selections just ended for most grades and are now starting for freshmen, and obviously March has just started, so a lot of college results are coming in for students, and a lot of seniors have started committing to various schools, whether for sports or just for academics. With the second term concluded, the official end of class rank marking periods for seniors has just finished, and so class ranks were recently sent out for senior students. And then finally, to touch on some more extracurriculars, International Club has been running a donation drive for medical supplies for Ukraine, and the Model UN team also ran a presentation on the crisis occurring in Ukraine currently for students during power block. This has actually been a big discussion topic recently in classes and in extracurriculars, and I think classes have been exploring it really well. I know that my econ class and my world history class have been talking a lot about Ukraine-related topics and concentrating on geopolitical effects of the invasion, as well as the conflict on gas prices and energy sources and things like that. And so just to kind of transition from that quickly to class work, I did want to talk a little bit about a project that we just started in economics, which is really exciting. We are talking about kind of bonds and stocks in this unit, so we just started a three-month-long project where we'd be pretending that we've graduated college and we're investing in stocks and bonds and insurance policies and a mortgage, and it's really entertaining because it's a competition, so the winner is the person who makes the most economically sound decisions and comes out of the project with the least debt. And so it's really interesting, and it's a cool way that our classes are preparing us for the real world, so I just wanted to mention that as well.
Excellent. Comments, questions?
I like the real-world stuff. I think that's amazing.
Yeah.
Picked a exciting time in the markets to do that as well.
That's what I was thinking.
I feel like Sonny's commentary on the model world where it's not about becoming wealthy, it's about having the least debt.
Debt.
Exactly.
Yeah. Well, excellent report as always. Congratulations again. I don't know. Anything else? We good? Okay. Thank you very much, Shivvi.
Thank you, Shivvi.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to start with COVID, or do you want to start with the middle school presentation?
Middle school.
Okay. We'll go to the middle school presentation here. We have a number of people here.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Patrick, can you share on there too?
Yeah, it's the one more thing. Thank you.
There is one video with a volume. I think that'll be okay.
For us, it'll be fine.
Okay.
It's just a matter of what they're going to say.
Good evening, everyone. Kathy O'Connell, middle school principal. I'm here with Laura Oliveto, the assistant principal. Four staff members are here with me: Jean Capuccio, Doug Delory, Katie Bray, and Brianne DePersio, as well as an eighth-grade student, Matt Capalbo. And we have four mini presentations for you this evening. We're going to, here's a little agenda. Ms. Capuccio and Mr. Delory are going to talk about the Bridge Program, which is a new program we've started this year to help with attendance. Ms. DePersio is going to talk about a new American Sign Language Club that has had active participation this year. Ms. Bray is our peer leader advisor, and she's going to talk to us about how we've been working to involve student voice in some of our decisions. And then Matt Capalbo is going to talk to, about his, talk with us about his experience as the Project 351 ambassador for this year, which is a great experience for Matt as he represents us. So we'll begin with Ms. Capuccio and Mr. Delory. Ms. Capuccio is a special education teacher, and...
Patrick, hang on just one second. So my mic's open. Is there another mic open, or is this the only one for the online?
Should this be yours?
No, no. That's just for Markham.
This one's muted.
What's, where's the mic for up here? Is it just, is that the mic?
Because the echo, the echo goes away when you mute your mic, right?
It does, because there must be a second mic going on, but...
Yeah. Well, sure. This is muted.
Okay.
It's being recorded.
Yeah, maybe if you speak from there instead of the mic, I can click for you if you want.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Can you unmute that conversation?
Can anyone hear me okay? Awesome.
Okay.
I'm Doug Delory and Ms. Jean Capuccio. We are, we make up the North Reading Bridge Program. It's a new program. It just started as a middle school this year, but it is a program that's been at North Reading Public Schools for, I think, the last six years. I've been working at the high school, in the high school bridge program for the past two years, and this is my first year working on establishing the bridge program at the middle school. Ms. Capuccio, Jean, and myself. It's a transitional program. It's a student center, short-term, transitional program that helps students transition to school after extended absence. So, you know, think about, just think about being out of school, or in this case, we have a, we start off at five consecutive days, but a lot of times, students that we work with are out of school for a lot longer than that. They, and the reasons for them being out of school are usually related to mental health reasons and challenges that require treatment, and they're returning from treatment back into school. So there is, you know, after being out of school for a extended period of time, they've missed potentially, you know, five to 20 days of school instruction, but they have to kind of figure out where the classes are. They also have to kind of manage, unfortunately, when you go to, you know, you get treatment and you're coming back from treatment, a lot of times you don't really, the issues don't just stop once you complete treatment, you know, there's something that continues. And so you're managing those underlying challenges while trying to transition back into school. The social component, the academic component, it can be quite challenging, and our program is really designed to support the student and the family academically, and that's where Jean comes in and does an awesome job, and myself clinically. So we collaborate with teachers, counselors, outside partners, families, and it's just every kind of player that's in a student's life, really, to create and implement and plan for success for their return to school. It's very individualized, it's a tier-three support. You know, we do reentry meetings, progress meetings. We have a classroom that is dedicated for the student, the students that are coming through the program, gives them a soft landing and a supportive environment to transition back into school. Transitions in life are challenging, as we know. Life transitions are, you know, are very difficult, and this is a transitional, for a lot of kids, their first big, like, could be really challenging transition that they have to kind of work through, so we support them in that process. There's four components. I don't know, Jean, you can talk about that.
Sure. Thank you.
You're pretty much covered it all.
I know, I can talk if I want.
So, the Bridge Program has a dedicated classroom within the middle school, and it's both comfortable and work-oriented. Doug and I work collaboratively to create student support plans that encompass four core components: academic support, clinical support, family engagement, and care and coordination. And as Doug said, we work with, you know, students and staff and outside providers collaboratively to make these plans work, but the key component really is family engagement and working with parents and guardians to make sure that we're providing good feedback to them and getting good feedback from them on progress of our students.
So again, just sort of talking about our two roles, there's, you know, and these bridge programs actually started in Brookline, and it's spread really throughout the state. There's, in New England, there's over 200 bridge programs, transition programs within New England, and it's kind of, and now there's Ohio, Oregon. It's really, it's really, it's a model that has found a lot of success in the school districts, and I think that's why we expanded it to the middle school, and it's been really, it's been awesome to see the success we've had already this year. So, I'm the clinician. I provide clinical support and care coordination, so a lot of times, students are coming back from treatment, so I will communicate and coordinate with the treatment providers prior to reentry, as well as their outside supports, therapists, psychiatrists, bring them into the conversation and the discussion on how best to support them in their transition back to school. And then there's obviously the academic component, where Jean does her job so well.
So I work with the students, again, you know, to create a manageable plan for getting their assignments and assessments done, and really to help them to shift their mindset from, you know, what they can't do to what can you do, you know, and to help them to build resilience and to have success and to start enjoying school again. And that's, you know, our ultimate goal is for them to be back into their classes full-time, you know, but we work with them creating a manageable process that works for them.
And then that process kind of is the vision, the lens that we kind of, we work through is practicing self-care, fostering connection, creating predictability, model moderation, and enable controllability. So those are the mantras and the tenants that we kind of live by, and I find success with when we use those. So that is our, that's the Bridge Program. That's it?
Yeah, and I would just add, just being the first year this year, the parents and the students who have taken advantage of this program have been tremendously grateful that the support is in place for their children. I don't know if any adults have ever had to miss work for, you know, four, five, six weeks, and you come back, and it's sort of overwhelming that everyone else has just been carrying on and you've missed. Certainly, the academics are important, but you've missed the socialization. You've missed, sometimes you forget how to open your locker, you forget your schedule, and this support is in place to help ease them back into a typical, normal day and get them back into their classes, and it's been an invaluable resource this year, and I appreciate the school committee and the superintendent's support as we go through year one of this program.
Thank you.
And Doug and Jean.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. It's obviously a wonderful program, and if there's, I mean, there's so many downsides to the horrible things out of the last two years, but it's great that we can use that to spot problems and start to address them and bring light to that. When you have kids kind of come through, and I know it's so variant, right, that they might have been gone for five days or 20 days, but how long typically are they spending in the bridge room? Is it most of a day, most of a week? Is it, what's the general flow?
It really definitely varies, and it's based on, you know, what they can do in the moment, and always, again, our goal is to get them participating to the maximum extent that's appropriate for them and that they can do, and it's, you know, we always try to shift their mindset to the positive, and we talk in terms of when they say, "I just can't do this," we talk about, "Well, what can you do? And let's build a plan for that." And it's really, we're providing that nurturing support to be able to help them, you know, see that they, yes, they can do this, but...
Exactly. So some students are coming back to school, they might attend a class or two, like, first day back. Other students are spending the first full few days completely in the bridge classroom, kind of getting a sense of where they are in the classes, kind of emotionally, kind of addressing any underlying concerns about being back into school, and then maybe slowly kind of reenter them back into their classes. Some kids are pretty resilient and can get back pretty quick, so I don't know, the length of time varies, it could, you know, I think the bright model is anywhere from four to six weeks, but it could be shorter than that, about a month, a month or so, on average, dish. Does that answer the question kind of?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep, thank you.
I'm just going to try to use the...
Try your phone again? Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We're just going to take a break for the next one.
Those mics, are they picking up and playing back into the flood? Because you're also participating in the meeting, right?
I'm just suspecting.
Yeah. I just want to make sure the kids got the...
I have a quick question. How many people are getting on the other side?
It varies.
Enter the meeting pin, followed by the time you leave.
Less, smaller.
Thank you. The number you dial or the pin you enter doesn't match a meeting that's ready to start soon.
My fault.
Enter the meeting pin, followed by the... Thank you. You'll join when the host lets you in.
This used to be a lot smoother.
Yeah, something's gone curfewy the last couple.
You're muted because a lot of people are on this call. Please try to unmute. The call is being recorded.
So you can mute, yeah.
I'm muting myself again.
I don't hear an echo. Great job, Superintendent Daley. Thank you, Ms. Capuccio and Mr. Delory. Our next presentation is from Ms. DePersio. Again, she started our American Sign Language Club, and just before she begins, I just want to, again, say thank you to the school committee and the superintendent and the assistant superintendent for helping fund a late bus. A late bus allows children to participate in after-school activities who otherwise might not be able to, and this is just a wonderful resource that we can provide our children. Myself, as a working mom, being a teacher, my children often had to take the bus and weren't able to stay and participate in after-school activities like the American Sign Language Club. So the late bus that we've been able to provide this year has been great, and as a result, we have lots of participation in the American Sign Language Club. And as a result, we have lots of participation in the American Sign Language Club, which is new this year. I'll stay. Do you want me to start the video?
Not quite yet, I just would like to just thank everybody for providing us with the opportunity to start the American Sign Language Club at NRMS. And attendance has been consistent, as Dr. O'Connell mentioned, and curiosity is growing. And I've noticed that the active participants in the club, it can fluctuate depending on what sport's in season. When we had the play going on at the middle school, that kind of took some of my members for a little while, which was fine. All are welcome at all times, and we always have that in the morning announcements to encourage more participation. We also, in addition, have provided ASL, American Sign Language, as an enrichment during the middle school's MTSS walk. And at times, we have combined club meetings with the high school ASL club, which has been really great to see the students learn from one another. And then here's a quick peek at what the students have been up to, and thank you again for supporting us and starting this club.
And Ms. DiPercio, I don't believe I said is a world language teacher and very much considers ASL a world language, for sure.
Thank you.
It will work, I previewed it. Unable to play. It did work. Let's try again. Well, it's on our end. We can maybe move this to the next, it was the video of the children signing, it was pretty great. So maybe we can, we can move it to the last part of the presentation, we might be able to figure out how to fix it.
Yeah, it sounds great.
The children did maybe like a one-minute video of them signing from the club, so we'll try to get that to work, and we'll go on to the next.
Sounds good.
But any questions about the ASL club?
You said it's been consistent about how many kids are doing it.
Oh, excuse me, I'm so sorry, I was texting Dana Sinnerati like an SOS, she has access to the slide, so I apologize. What was your question, I apologize?
About how many students, you said it's been pretty consistent, but...
Yeah, it's been pretty consistent in that there are at least five active participants per meeting. That the attendance has gone upwards of 10 students and has gone as few as three students. And so I think also having it as enrichment during MTSS also provides some curiosity for students to stop by, see what everything's about.
Can you get any sort of proficiency, I know we've, I know you can get proficiency in Spanish or French. Can you get proficiency, is there anything you can work towards for that?
Yeah, there are benchmarks that match the same American Council on Teaching of World Language. It's an acronym called ACTFEL. Their proficiency benchmarks align with American Sign Language. And so, you know, when we talk about proficiency in language, we talk about novice low, novice mid, meeting different types of criteria for these benchmarks. And this as well can happen in sign language, and there is one student in the district that's going for the Bileta RACCL in American Sign Language, which is also provided for students.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I don't know why it's not working, but we'll try to get it to work. Hopefully, we have another video, so hopefully that one will work. I know, Ms. Bray has a video as well, so, I don't know, is it because we're presenting, do you think?
It could be that wherever the video lives isn't shared.
Okay, alright.
So maybe just listen to the presentation, if you log in, you played it on yourself.
Yes.
I didn't play them.
Okay. Let me see.
Unshare and share that.
That's a good idea.
Right.
Just before you start, I wanted to see if I could get it. Then I could do that, so I could log in as, do you see it there?
Do you have the...
It's one of those days.
It's alright. Where did it go?
Somebody was trying to tell you something?
Yeah.
Only got the picture. Yeah, it's still giving the error, though. Way back.
That's still what it's supposed to do.
Scott, you got a song you want to sing?
Say, "Next time you have to bring the technology people to the meeting." See the video?
Katie has one too.
Yeah. Yeah, it's in someone's drive. Is this the other one? Yeah, I think the problem is it's just not approved, like, it's not on YouTube, it's like, it's in someone's drive. So I think it probably needs to be approved.
Well, we can certainly talk through what Katie was going to share, and I can make the videos accessible to you. What Katie was going to share, Katie Bray is an eighth-grade ELA teacher, she's also the peer leaders advisor, and she met with a group of peer leaders and asked them to give their feedback on some questions that we had asked them at the beginning of the school year regarding questions like, "Do they like school? Do they feel that students are acknowledged for working hard?" And what the students did was they kind of gave us their input on the perspective of the student body and by grade level, where it was different, and can you remember what some of, we created a video, but...
Of course, thank you. So there were a couple of big ones that differed by grade level. I like school being one of them, students are frequently recognized for good behavior being another. And there was a third one broken down by grade level. One of them also addressed where they feel safe at school, social media came up as something that they wanted to talk about. And we do have representation from all three grade levels, so we looked at the data together. I just kind of showed them how it worked and what it looked like, and then I gave them a meeting to work in small groups if they wanted to, work independently if they wanted to, and just kind of take notes on where they felt like that data could come from, the reasons behind that data. And we talked a lot about, you know, you're speaking on behalf of your student body, things like that, and taking that into consideration as well, that they weren't just representing how they felt, but how anybody in the middle school could feel. And we talked a lot about how to deliver information constructively and how to deliver things that can address what they want to address, but in a respectful way. So they put the script together themselves and recorded a video. Eighth graders were a little bit more comfortable being on the camera than others, so a lot of the representation you physically see in the video is mostly eighth grade. But all of them kind of worked together to come up with their thoughts and feelings, and they worked together as a group to address it. So they did a great job, we played it at a recent faculty meeting where we gave all of our staff time to then reflect on the feedback from them and fill out a form with some ideas of what we can do to kind of address the changes that the kids felt were needed. So Dr. O'Connell and I since then have talked about, you know, reinstilling a different reward system for positive behavior and things like that. So I hope that they recognize that their voices did bring some change, they did a really great job, so.
I'm sorry, this doesn't work.
No, we're going to try to get it to work, but specifically, we, during COVID, switched to acknowledging student behavior through a student shout-out. It's a digital shout-out, so the teachers fill out a quick form, we use Autocrat, and it sends the students a personalized, thank you, thank you.
Oh, yay, thank you.
Hey!
Solve one problem to have another problem.
It's nothing shared online. Can you share it?
So I have a question. This was all work with the student leaders?
Yeah, so peer leaders meet every other week, sometimes more often throughout a month, and they honestly, I kind of let them decide the things that they want to do throughout the school. But this was something that I had talked to Dr. O'Connell about and said, you know, the staff looks at this data, and who better to hear from than the kids, because they're the ones that completed it. So they were totally on board, and again, they did a really nice job of representing their student body and addressing some of the data that we saw.
And how is all that communicated to the rest of the student body?
You know, that's a great question. They were very comfortable with the staff hearing their thoughts and feelings, and again, being mindful that they were representing their entire student body, but they as a group have not addressed their feelings with their peers, more with us.
Can you mute, Chase? Got it, got it here.
I don't have to watch, I think it's too difficult to hear.
I have copies of the scripts from that one if you want to take these.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I actually think that's ultimately our problem.
So basically, Katie is kind of being the first to really try to capture student voice in our decisions, and we hope to do a lot more of that moving forward. In fact, Katie's going to help with Dana Sinnerati take the planning over for the end-of-year eighth-grade activities, and very much is going to improve student input into what those activities are and what their kind of middle school legacy day, graduation day looks like. And as she said, we did, I was saying earlier, during COVID, we were sending digital student shout-outs. Like, "You did a great job," they'd get an email, and we heard from students that while that is nice, it's still, they were reminiscent of when they were in the sixth grade, we actually gave out these little green tickets that we didn't think that they liked, but apparently they really like, and they want the green tickets back, and they want that like candle in the moment, like, "Hey, you did a great job, I'm proud of you," feeling. And so we talked with staff about that, and we're going to be bringing back the green tickets and also have the digital student shout-outs. It's a very small change, but it's something that they asked for, that we can easily do, and they're, I think it, in a bigger sense, speaks to the COVID isolation, to have that personalization of me saying to you, you know, "Here you go, you did a great job, I'm proud of you," and giving you something rather than getting it virtually through an email. So I think they're craving that personal touch, and so that's something small that we're going to start next month. And the video, I know you're all very busy, but you can watch the video, I'm sure, at another time. Thankfully, this video doesn't have sound, so we should be able, this is the sign language video.
It's all shared with you, so you can watch.
Great.
And you would say all of these kids did not sign prior to club?
No, some of them knew like a few letters.
And what are they doing, what are they saying?
They're introducing themselves and asking each other how they're doing. The previous group was just introducing themselves. She's saying, "How are, and how are you?" That's a great mix of grades, six through eight, good. That's great.
Oh, I had another question about that. Did any of the kids, did they come to the club because they were interested? Maybe they had a family member or friends who they wanted to be able to communicate better with by using ASL? Or are you aware of what their motivations are, I'm just curious?
Yeah, I think that's a really great question. We do talk about, we talk heavily about the deaf community and what options you have when you are either born deaf or you become deaf or hard of hearing, and kind of what that looks like to people who, you know, and within the deaf community, you have people that were born deaf and then people that either sustained an injury or, you know, became ill for whatever reason and their hearing is not the same. I would say the motivation of most of the students to show up was just curiosity. I do have some students who say that they have someone in their family that served in the armed services, and they're hard of hearing because of what they were put through in war, and so they like to kind of just bring that to the table at home, I assume. I would say it's a little bit of a mix.
Thanks.
I have one more question on ASL, so with a club like ASL, if you, when you started off, sixth, seventh, and eighth are all at the same level, you're starting from the very beginning, but how do you incorporate it like in two years, when sixth graders are in eighth grade? How do you do a club when some of the students have been doing it for two years and the others are starting back at the very beginning?
Yeah, so that would just really come down to like differentiated instruction and tiering them differently in groups, if that were the case. Learning language is sequential, much like math, so if they don't show up every time, some of it's not going to make sense. But I do have a lot of visuals I provide for the students, and every time they do something new, I just put the visual in the binder, and I have a class set of binders. So that way, if a student doesn't, can't come one week because they're sick or they have something else going on, they're able to kind of look back at what we did and self-teach, and we always review. So, yeah, I would say that, you know, other than being self-motivated to keep up, there wouldn't really, in differentiated instruction, there wouldn't really be another.
Yeah, I was thinking more about future years, because, you know, you have sixth graders come in that haven't done it, and...
Miss Sinnerati with the Video Production Club has, in some years, had like a Tuesday for eighth graders, a Thursday for sixth graders, and that's always an option if it's necessary down the road. Just, it's meeting a little bit less frequently with each grade level, but it's more specialized to where that grade level is in terms of their readiness.
Might even be able to combine with the high school to do that, because somebody might start in ninth grade or 10th grade, and it's their first year.
Going on that thought process, could the older ones help instruct the younger ones? Because I think you had mentioned that...
Yeah, we have combined meetings.
Yeah.
And so the high school students are much the same in participation as the middle school. It's as consistent as they can make it, you know, around everything else going on in their student lives. And so it is, we have another meeting coming up on the 16th, and they're going to be coming down to the middle school to visit us and kind of teach from one another. They're going to give each other resources, what they've used that's been helpful on YouTube, you know, that's appropriate to kind of self-teach at home, as well as we share with them things that we've discovered. There's a video we get pretty heavy into about this small group in Andoros, and they were really isolated, and there were a lot of deaf people in the community, and so they came up with their own sign language, they started their own. And so we kind of tried to cover...
And being on the same schedule as the high school does allow for opportunities, when appropriate, to have groups join together. That's been helpful this year, too. Otherwise, there's a 30-minute delay, and in teenage time, that's a long time to wait around for a club to start, so. Any other questions for the peer leaders or ASL? And again, please, when you have a moment, please check out that peer leaders video. It's well done.
Well, do.
Okay, last but not least, Mr. Capalbo, and there's no video involved, so you should not have a problem.
Hopefully not.
Now, so, do you want, want me to introduce you?
Uh, I can.
Okay.
So, my name is Matthew Capalbo, and I am the Project 351 representative for North Reading. Project 351 is a nonprofit organization that aims to help young leaders improve on their leadership skills and help others in their community. So, launch day is the first day that all 351 representatives from the 351 towns in Massachusetts get together, and they meet each other in person. Unfortunately, this year, because of COVID, it had to be virtual, which was very unfortunate. And there was a video that we all watched at the same time, and previous members of Project 351 talked to us about their experiences, which helped us to understand what we were going to be doing at Project 351 and how it would help us grow. My favorite part of the video was when Governor Charlie Baker talked to us about Project 351 and what an honor it is to be selected for it. Every week, we meet on a Zoom call, and we learn how to become better leaders, and sometimes we hear from special guests. For example, last week on Tuesday, there was a meeting, and Matthew Slater from the New England Patriots was on the meeting, and he talked to us about his journey in the NFL and what inspires him to be a better person. Also during these meetings, we do what's called scenarios, where we're given a situation, and we are given options of how to deal with the situation. So, for example, one scenario that we were given was, you're at a restaurant with your friends, and one of your friends makes a racist joke, and the family sitting behind you is the race that the joke was targeting, and you can tell that they are upset by the joke. So, then we were given a bunch of options. Some of the options were to go up to the family and apologize on your friend's behalf. You could also talk to your friend at the restaurant about why it's not okay to say stuff like that, and make sure that the family overhears you so that they know somebody's sticking up for them. And then, one more option was to talk to your friend about it when you leave the restaurant. Scenarios like these, like this, helps to prepare us for when, if we were to ever encounter it in real life, like, whether it be at home or at school or at a restaurant. So, these are really helpful. So, kind of transitioning away from that a bit, spring service is where each ambassador can do a service project to Cradles to Crans. Cradles to Crans is a nonprofit organization that supplies children from, like, yeah, who supplies children from, like, one to 12 with donated clothes because they can't get the clothes for themselves. And the ambassadors do a clothing drive at their school, and they can get different clubs to help out, their friends to help out, and they get as many people as possible to donate slightly worn clothes to their clothing drive. So, I think it's like the first week in April, or maybe second week, I will be doing a clothing drive at the middle school, and I hope that I can help as many people as possible through the clothing drive and get as many clothes to as many children as possible. Overall, Project 351 has been a great opportunity for me. I'm so grateful that I was selected for it. I believe it will help me grow and learn and become a better leader. Thank you for allowing me to present to you.
Is there any questions for Matt?
Any questions?
How cool of a guy is Matthew Slater?
He's really cool.
Yeah, great, great role model.
Can you refresh our memories on what it takes to be nominated, or how you apply or to become the representative?
So, you don't really apply for it. You're kind, you're, so it's only eighth graders, so you're observed over your sixth and seventh grade years, and the educators and people at your school, like, kind of all pick a person after, like, talking about it? This O'Connell could probably...
No, you got it, you got it. You don't apply, you don't apply. The eighth-grade teams, each team nominates one eighth-grade student after speaking with the sixth and seventh-grade teachers, and Matt was nominated, and then a vote goes out to the entire staff, and Matt was selected to be our ambassador this year.
That's awesome.
Very special. Matt's also a talented trumpet player?
Trombone.
Trombone player, practicing in junior districts, right? He's a, he's a busy guy.
Matt, what are your leadership goals or plans for, as you transition into high school?
Well, it's a good question. I really just hope to help as many people as possible, because I've always thought that helping people is one of the best things that you can do.
Really?
That concludes our presentation.
I just want one question from Matt.
Oh, sorry.
Great job, very proud to have you there. So, we have Project 351 presented to the superintendents, and we've looked at these scenarios and the playbook, the Celtics playbook that you're pulling from. Is there any talk about doing something with students here? Because there's a, there's an idea of doing some marrying where, like, older students might teach with younger students. Have you talked about that with Dr. Conley?
Uh, no, I have not talked about that yet, but that's something I can look into.
Yeah, that's great. It's great to hear that you do.
Maybe we can team up with Ms. Gray, the peer leaders.
It's just, it's a great, it's a great program, really well thought out, so thank you so much.
That concludes our presentation. I apologize for the technological difficulties, and thank you, Dr. Daly and Mr. Conley for helping.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. It was nice to be in person.
Thank you.
It was great to see everyone.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure, go ahead.
Jason, are we back on? Okay. What I was saying, I think the mic was interfering with the speakers. I don't think it had anything to do with the hall. It was something with that, that's why when we're talking with the volume here, it's picking it up. Thank you. Just to make sure we're back on.
Okay. Why don't we, before we go to the budget, do you want to just do the COVID? Do you want to go back to the top, Dr. Daly, since it's all us here?
Yes.
Why don't we start with the COVID-19 update, and then we can continue with the new business after that?
We're still on the phone. Can you just make sure that's still on?
Yeah.
Sorry. Yep, it looks like it. Okay, great. Thank you, guys.
Sure, just wanted to update, since we last met, I think, you know, so we met on February 7th. Two days later, the governor and the commissioner made their announcement about the mask mandate ending on February 28th. I think that clarified for most people that it was really a governor, you know, a governor-level decision, and it wasn't something that was up to local districts to make their own decisions on. We, because we had already discussed it, we were able to just follow right through. The Friday right before we came back to school, the CDC also released and made changes to the federal mandate, and because, again, we had no, nothing in place, I spoke with the Board of Health, I spoke with Scott just to clarify, Mr. Buckley, I'm sorry, just to clarify, but we were able to come back to school without those mandates in place. As mentioned, you know, in my, in my correspondence, there is still a requirement in the nurse's office, and I think that's, you know, in all medical facilities, we're seeing that. I had to go to an appointment today, and we had to wear a mask, that's still a requirement in those spaces. We have installed some mask units outside of the doors of the nurses' areas. We still have, you know, students and staff who are opting to wear masks. It's not a large number. I know some of you have asked sort of what the numbers are. There were more towards the beginning of last week, and it has changed a little bit. Some schools more than others, it's just the culture of the school, or the, you know, it's everyone's individual choice. I think what I tried to communicate out is that it is a choice, and we need to respect people's choices, and no one should be made to feel that their choice is putting them in harm's way. So, we feel that the, the reason why all these rules from our public health agencies have changed is because they feel that it is a climate that's safe enough for that choice. And so, we've, as we know, we advocated for choice right from the beginning, unless the public health officials said that the data was such that they were concerned. That's what they decided in late August, early September, and that's why we were in the place we were until, until this decision was changed in February. You know, I was going to update, and I will update, on testing. We still have pool testing. There are still, you know, hundreds of people that want that option, and they have a right to choose to be a part of that option. Same with the at-home testing, we have people that really appreciate that. We have actually had some people adding back into that as the masks have come off, and it helps to make that transition smooth. I don't know if anyone has any questions about, about that?
No, I thought it was pretty well communicated overall, so I appreciate, you know, your communication throughout. I know, no means we think everything's over, but it's nice to be back a little bit more normal than we were before, so.
It is.
Thank you for your leadership throughout, and I hope everything stays good.
We've had, just to answer the question that's come up a few times, too, about, you know, we didn't mask coming back from break, and my answer that I've been saying to folks is I feel that we, you know, each district made different decisions, right? There were different districts that were still masked. I think they had to make the right decision for their district. The logic that, that I've been saying to folks is that, you know, we're in a culture now of choice and also informed choice, right? So, I think if I had communicated out that there were, you know, hundreds of new cases in the first two or three days of school, more people may have made the choice to mask. I don't think we needed to mandate masks for the two weeks coming back from break. I think people still can make an informed choice, and we have had just a handful. So, we're, we're into the second week now of coming back from break, and we haven't seen that large spike, nothing close to, you know, January. We've had back to, and you can see on the dashboard, we've had in March so far, about 10 or so students, one to two staff members. And in, in the late February, including the break, it was about the same. So, we have not seen large numbers or large spikes or anything like that, so.
Are, are most of the positive cases self-reported now, or are they being tested here? I'm just curious, because I know, I, I'm just not sure if they're self-reporting or not.
Sure. Most of the, most of the cases are self-reported. There's some symptomatic cases that were, people go to the nurse and they've opted for symptomatic, we can still catch those, there's a few of those that happen here. And then, there's been a few at home, very few, from the at-home program, but it's just another vehicle to try to stay out ahead of, of numbers. And our number-one goal always has been and continues to be keeping school open and keeping kids in school. And so, there are some other mitigation strategies we're still having in place to try to keep everyone in school and have events, but we have been able to successfully have a crowd at a basketball game and some other events, and it's been, it's been very successful so far.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any questions? No? Okay. So, we had, under, under the budget update later, we had the first preliminary budget, but we're going to move that ahead in case people drop off, I figure. Budget is just a little more exciting than a school committee goal, I think.
Yeah. Oh, Mr. Buckley.
I know.
That's crazy. Everybody's fast.
I know.
Evaluation subcommittee is duly effective.
I'm going to go plug in before my dies at the end.
You want an extension cord I can give you?
I have an extension.
I'm actually going to run to the restroom.
I actually want to get away from all of you. Just kidding.
Oh, I see, you're going to go over there. I do, I don't, it disappeared. Something happened, I was up here and disappeared.
Oh, I know. The meeting disappeared?
Yeah. So, I don't know that I'm still on there.
Who's like, who's that? Who's sharing that?
Me, my computer.
Oh, your computer?
Yeah. So, I, I can do, just do it from there, and I'll just show the screen.
Okay.
Yeah, you can just follow along with me and do that.
Yeah.
I printed it out, it's really hard.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to go through the preliminary budget presentation at this point, and these are the agenda topics. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about the challenges in municipal school budgeting that, really, that we face every year when putting together a school or municipal budget. So, I'll cover a little bit about the, the challenges, I'll talk about the major budget drivers, which really haven't changed significantly over the last number of years, but...
Okay, can you share the...
I think Patrick's working on it.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So, I'll talk about the drivers, I'll get into the numbers and the priorities, and I'll break down the budget in terms of our major categories and what the numbers look like and how they compare to fiscal '22. We always try to certainly have some new staffing positions driven by enrollment, as well as our strategic plan, and I'll touch base on this new staffing positions, as well as carried-over positions from outside funding sources. I'll get into the offsets and the budget subsidies and the various grants, federal, state revolving offsets that are helping to fund the budget, and then we'll draw some conclusions at the end of the presentation. So, these are the challenges that sort of exist when, really, when funding a school department budget, there's sort of a structural deficit that's somewhat at play, given the fact that your annual revenues, given they're capped at Proposition 2.5 and other local receipts and things that kind of make up the local appropriation of the revenue that comes in from state aid, local aid, local receipts, and, you know, property taxes are generally kind of capped, they generally grow at a lower amount than your fixed costs. So, certainly, health insurance, general liability insurances, benefits, and everything that kind of goes into your, your fixed costs generally grow at almost double the rate, as you can see by the chart, with the green being fixed costs and yellow being revenue, have sort of out, generally, from an annual, annual basis, outpaced that of your, your revenue. So, when you start the budget process in any municipal or school budget, this is not a North Reading issue, it's really a nationwide, Massachusetts across the country, you kind of start with this, this deficit that you're working from. Then we have our other revenue, what I just mentioned, the grants, subsidies revolving accounts, state and federal grants, those are generally limited. Most of our federal and state grants are entitlement grants, we certainly go after many competitive grants and work hard to get all the grants that are out there. That amount's a little bit higher than it's been over the last couple of years next year, mainly because there's some additional emergency state relief funding through, from COVID-19 that we have the ability to tap into next year as well, that we have certainly have had the last couple of years, but generally, it's limited. And then you have our contractual obligations, when you look at the fact that salaries make up 83.5% of our school budget, and our fixed costs from utilities and operational issues, the majority of our, our school department budget is mostly fixed, and those, those grow and there's inflationary increases to that. So, there's, there's these challenges that exist. Dr. Daly just gave an update on COVID-19, the trajectory of COVID-19 has been positive, we hope that continues, as we just mentioned. So, there's still a level of uncertainty there, but I think the picture is a lot better than what it was a year ago when I was standing here talking about some, some uncertainty related to the COVID-19 pandemic. These are our revenue sources, I'll just touch upon them briefly. Certainly, the local taxes, not unusual that that makes up over 70% of the revenue that's coming in to fund the school budget. Then we have, the next biggest piece of that pie is our state aid, our Chapter 70 state aid we get from the state. Local aid, unrestricted government local aid makes up about 12.3%. Then we have some local receipts that come in, funding from permits, fees, licenses, excise taxes, mail tax, fines, and those types of things help make up local receipts. And then we have the other piece of the pie from the school department, which is our state and federal grants, and any tuition-based programs, full-day kindergarten preschool, and then some other fee-based programs, like athletics, extracurricular, busing, and so forth, make up the other piece of the pie.
I appreciate the .01, 74.01.
Yeah. Our major... And then we have the other piece of the pie from the school department, which is our state and federal grants and any tuition-based programs, full-day kindergarten preschool and then some other fee-based programs like athletics, extracurricular, busing and so forth make up the other piece of the pie.
I appreciate the .01, 74.01.
Yeah. Our major budget drivers, so contractual salary obligations. I just, I mentioned earlier that salaries make up 83.5% of our budget. So that's obviously the largest piece of the pie and the largest driver of our school budget. It's not unusual that that is the case. That 83% has been pretty standard and pretty typical over the last number of years. And if you go to any local budget, school budget in the Commonwealth, you'll see a very similar statistic of about certainly over 80% making up salaries. So to fund those ongoing contractual obligations for our staff, whether those being collective bargaining agreements or on other individual agreements, there's a cost to that and that's usually the largest driver of the budget. Then we have our operational fixed costs, costs to help continue to maintain our five buildings and campuses for custodial services, maintenance services, grounds, wastewater treatment, you know, the complex and facility and those services. All those things have a cost to it. I believe we've done an excellent job controlling those operational costs and those fixed costs, but they do have some inflationary increases and those do go up and they tend to be certainly a driver of the school budget. The third thing is enrollment. So we have changes in enrollment from year to year. This driver in this particular budget is changes at the elementary level, in particular in the primary grades with the higher kindergarten class coming in, mostly driven by census data and birth rates, five or six years earlier. We can kind of get a predict those. We knew that was going to be the case, so that's a driver of this budget. We've had to increase some of our enrollment staffing to make sure we're maintaining class sizes at the level that they are currently and certainly within our guideline that we set with the school committee. And then we have our strategic plan known as NRPS 2025, really guiding all our new initiatives. Certainly there's been a focus with the COVID-19 pandemic on addressing intervention strategies to address learning loss and academic intervention strategies, as well as the mental health, the school adjustment counselors, school health services, technology services. This is all a focus that not only has it's been heightened because of what's been going on with the COVID-19 pandemic over the last two years, but it's also been part of our strategic plan for a number of years as well. So that continues to be a driver. And then special education costs, probably the biggest variable in putting together a school department budget is some of that, these costs, given they can change quickly. So that is certainly a need that's driving this school department budget as we are funding both our, you know, in-house special education costs as well as to win appropriate funding students that do attend schools outside the district. So when you get into the numbers, we are looking at these five categories as generally some of the categories we look at in terms of our salaries, instructional costs, operational costs, and then transportation and tuition. So when you look at how they compare to fiscal 22, you can see some of those percentage increases. And I think really what you see at play is many of the drivers I just spoke of. So the largest driver being the salary, you know, contractual salary obligations is certainly driving that 4.6% increase, a little over 1.5 million. About 2.7% of that is driven by contractual salary obligations. And then you look at both some new positions driven by needs on the enrollment end at the elementary level and then some new positions, which I'll get into in more detail later in the presentation, driven by our strategic plan certainly leads to the 4.6% increase. Yes.
The operations and management, I'm just kind of curious. Are you going to give it a pillow scenes how the cost of everything has gone up, fuel and oil and gas?
Yeah. So we've looked at that. Fortunately, our gas and utility budget that would have been pretty significantly impacted, our gas and oil budget, we have locked in previously. So we're locked in for next year at rather favorable rates. So we're, so that's actually fixed. We're not subject to what would be going on in the market right now with those increases. So we've previously locked in for next year at pretty favorable rates.
And so in 2024, maybe not so favorable and hopefully it'll go up.
You'll revisit that. Yeah. So, yes.
Mr. Conley, my only question is, and I know we're, well, you may talk about, I'll talk about insurance later on. Insurance is not part of this number, correct? It's not part of the salary.
That's correct.
Benefits are not part of that.
That's correct. So that health insurance costs for benefits are kind of on the fixed cost side, on the town side of the equation, and it's not reflected here. That's straight salaries. That's a good question.
But so those changes there impact the money available?
The money available, correct. So some of those revenue sources and fixed costs.
And we'll talk about that.
That I went over. Right. So, you know, certainly operations, maintenance, utilities going up, there's other contractual services going up, but we've done a good job to be vigilant, to control those costs and there's savings elsewhere by regulating the occupancy schedules of each building. So we've, we've really been able to kind of offset some of those costs and identify savings in other areas. We've done a really good job getting a good handle on the wastewater treatment plan and be able to reduce costs there. So even though some of these utility lines and contractual services are going up, we're offsetting some decreases elsewhere to keep that really at a minimal $7,000 increase overall. Transportation is minimal. And then the other big driver, which I mentioned, special education, this out-of-district tuition line is an increase, the next kind of largest increase. That's been difficult to predict. I think last year it was going down. This year it's kind of back to going up. We do feel like there's going to be a few more students being educated outside the district next year than there is this year, which is probably the biggest factor in that cost. That's really a trend that's going on across the state right now and perhaps the nation. So we're not, North Reading's not unlike others. But it's, again, that's probably a difficult number to predict that can change pretty quickly. But overall, we're at $36,077,169 as a request to the local appropriation. There's a lot more funding that goes into the school department budget that's being funded by grants, revolving accounts that I'll get into in a moment. But overall, the general fund operating budget request is a $1.8 million increase or 5.3% higher than fiscal 22. How are the funds being sent? Just quickly, this looks at some of these instructional kind of expense categories. I mentioned earlier, there's a salaries and compensation. Again, that's outside of health insurance and benefits. That's strictly salaries for our staff, you know, teachers, administrators, support staff at making up 83.5%. We then have the contractual services and outside tuition lines at 5.2% and 4.2% making up the next kind of largest piece of the pie. But overall, there hasn't been a lot of changes to this, to this breakdown in this pie. This has been pretty consistent over the last number of years. And I think it's interesting when you look at this, you certainly look at items like certainly salaries, contractual services, utilities, transportation, outside district tuition costs. You know, all of those kind of add up to really like 89, 90% of the piece of the pie. So the remaining items that kind of discretionary spending, the supplies and the materials, the professional development, some small capital, really make up the remaining kind of 10% of the budget. So when you, overall, when you look at it, almost 90% of our budget is in some ways fixed. So we're really dealing with a small piece of the remaining pie. That's the discretionary spending. That's about, about a million dollars remaining. So there's, that's, that's kind of what is pretty typical in a school department budget. If you look at these functional categories, it's certainly not unusual and certainly a positive thing that the instructional services piece to fund the classroom teachers, the supplies and the materials, technology, everything that would be part of that piece of the pie would be the highest amount at over 77%. Administrative is at 3.3%. So we've been able to kind of keep our administrative costs relatively low. That's actually below the state average, which is closer to about 4% when you look across the state. And then our operations and maintenance is the next largest piece at 9.4%. Again, building costs, I mentioned it, utilities, maintenance, grounds, snow and ice removal. And then the tuition piece is 5.2. But again, certainly the largest piece of the pie is at 77.2% and that's the cost that funds the classroom teachers and the instructional budgets. So when we get into our staffing positions and what's being requested, what are the new positions being requested? I mentioned earlier that this is the third major driver with enrollment and our strategic plan and the staffing piece. Our enrollment at the elementary level is going up predominantly at the kindergarten. So there is some new staffing positions being requested because of those increases and they're reflected here in table one. So there is a grade level position at one of the elementary schools because of as kind of lower class sizes work their way into the middle school and higher class sizes kind of work their ways up amongst the grades. In terms of when grades advance each level, sometimes you need additional teacher to maintain those class sizes that we always try to strive for between 18 and 22. So because of that dynamic at play, there's an additional elementary grade level position. And that, that's actually in grade five. And then the other three positions are driven by our kindergarten, full-day kindergarten enrollment, which is up by about, you know, a little more than 22 students, I believe. And that's the need for some additional sections, full-day sections, which comes with a teacher and then in this case, two, two paraprofessional positions. So all in all, that's a little over $207,000 increase to the budget of four FTE positions. Our strategic plan is carrying for 5.5 FTE positions. I mentioned that certainly what's been heightened because of the COVID-19 pandemic is this focus on the social and emotional and the mental health needs of all students at all levels. We certainly added some staff this year that are being funded by some of the COVID-19 grants, which I'll get into in a moment. There's certainly a need to carry those forward, but I think a lot of ways, there was a lot of correlation between our strategic plan and the needs of, you know, COVID-19. So it's certainly accelerated some of these requests, but we certainly see a need to have an additional school adjustment counselor at the elementary level. Currently, there is one school adjustment counselor that is sharing their time between all three elementary schools. And we don't feel like that's enough. We feel like an additional adjustment counselor would allow one to be shared perhaps between the two smaller schools and then one dedicated to the larger elementary school would be a significant enhancement to what we have currently. We have, for many years, had this teaching and learning coordinator position in the budget. It's made it past some early rounds of the budget, it's never quite made it to the final level to be funded. It is an administrative position. It certainly would assist school principals in providing support in certainly areas of curriculum, instruction, assessment, certainly assist in supervision and evaluation with the, you know, educational evaluation needs. But it's certainly there to help align and consistent the curriculum across all levels and it's a really important position when you look at a lot of the work that Dr. Daley has done with the curriculum leaders in the district, that they have certainly worked collaboratively to try to come up with a model that will work and provide a benefit to all. And this, this is the kind of the first step in that vision that Dr. Daley and the administrative team shares with many of the North Reading educators. So this is, this would be step one in that. These next three positions are the academic interventionists. This would address, you know, areas of any learning loss or additional academic support, whether in areas of literacy, reading or math, particularly at the elementary level. So currently, that's, the word upgrade is there because currently we have three tutors that are being funded through some of the COVID-19 emergency relief grants. We feel like we want to kind of upgrade that, enhance those services by having a designated professional position that's there full-time at each elementary school that can step in, help to provide those intervention strategies early on in our efforts at response intervention and our multi-tier layers of support to be there to address areas of either in math or literacy at the elementary level. This would be a significant upgrade than over those 15-hour-per-week tutors, which have been extremely helpful this year, but this would certainly be both in line with our strategic vision and certainly helping to address any learning loss identified through the COVID-19 pandemic. And that goes along with the middle school position, the .5 position certainly would focus at the middle school in areas in math and in literacy in grade six through eight, but certainly a much-needed position and certainly in working with Dr. O'Connell, we feel, you know, a .5 position at about 20 hours per week would be significantly helpful at the middle school level. Yes?
Can you repeat through the COVID fund of the elementary schools? You said there's one being shared by three or?
So this, so this slide shows, so this is currently, I think this might answer your question.
Okay.
This is currently what's being funded through the COVID-19 emergency secondary school relief grant.
Okay.
So we have, we've had access to this grant over the last two fiscal years. Part of our budget forecasting would allow for about $215,000, $213,000, $215,000 a year through fiscal '24. So we're trying to avoid that funding cliff by using too much of what's available. So part of our budget forecasting in fiscal '23 would be to continue to fund these positions at this level, about $213,000. And I believe your question was the school adjustment counselor that's reflected here that we have currently, that we want to continue through this grant next year. That position's being currently sharing its time amongst all three elementary schools. The one that we're hoping to add would then just help that instead of, we would love three, but you'll see in a moment, we're trying to balance the fiscal constraints of the community and what we need in our strategic plan and what we have available to us from a funding perspective. Two would be a significant enhancement and upgrade over what we have currently.
Thank you.
Michael?
Yes.
On the, on the previous slide, on the interventionist, the academic interventionist upgrade, so those three positions are replacing three part-time positions or adding on to the three part-time? What's?
Yeah. So the idea is that they would replace.
Okay.
So we have.
And that number reflects the difference?
Correct. Yeah. So I've backed out.
The 15 hours.
The tutorer positions, the 15 hour per week. Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
At the elementary school.
At the elementary.
This would be a new position.
Right. Yep. Got it.
The plan is to have a full-time at the middle school. This is a first.
A step.
First, right. So we currently have a school adjustment counselor at the middle school and the high school. That's funded through this grant that's kind of shared between both schools, about a .5 at each. We certainly feel like that's very much needed to continue. And we have access to these two digital learning technicians that have been extremely valuable. They were added at the beginning of the pandemic through this grant. And they've, as you, as you all know, we've certainly very much increased our amount of devices in, the network is supporting. We're now a complete K through 12, one-to-one district. And we were only one-to-one K through six when the pandemic began. So these 1.5 positions significantly help support that, that program and troubleshoot any issues and keep, keep that one-to-one program running as well as, as well as they do a variety of other tasks that are needed from a network perspective, maintenance perspective across the district. And then the Florida School Nurse, which was added at the beginning of the pandemic through this, through this funding source, has been extremely instrumental and vital in terms of our ability to address requirements through contract tracing and certainly testing program and just a variety of needs. And we don't see all that going away. The trajectory's gotten much better. We, in a lot of ways, we've always desired to have this position even before the pandemic. And this is a position we feel like there's a need to continue. So just to remind you, there's, there's funding at about this level available through fiscal '24. We at, you know, we are concluding fiscal '22. So our pro forma budgeting would mean that this funding source, whether we remain with these positions, could continue through the next two fiscal years. And we would revisit this and assess the needs each year, but certainly next year we feel like this is necessary to continue. So just to summarize, as we get to conclude, I'll get into the budget offsets in a moment. This is the amount we're looking for, the amount that's circled here, a little more than $36 million for the town, town meeting to appropriate at their annual town meeting in June, which is what would be supported by the local budget. It's a $1.8 million increase. We have additional grants, both from the state and federal, and our revolving funds, which I'll get into in a moment, that total a little more than $3.4 million. That total a little more than three-point-four-million dollars, so the full piece of the pie, quite honestly, is not the thirty-six million, it's really thirty-nine-point-five-million that makes up the school department budget. And that's a little bit more than a one-point-eight-million-dollar increase. And even that doesn't really tell the full picture of all the funding that's happening in North Reading. You have school committee donations, which have annually averaged over the last five years about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. You have your PTO in-kind budgets that help fund classroom materials, enrichment programs, technology equipment at times, a variety of field trips that average about seventy-five-thousand dollars. So all those go into, and then you certainly have a lot of student clubs and activity budgets and other, other factors that help make the North Reading educational experience what it, what it is. Just another way of looking at, looking at it in terms of salaries and expenses, but overall, we're getting to the the amount that is circled is again, is the amount we would be going to the annual town meeting for. Just, I already talked about this, but just as a big picture, you have your all funds, so your general fund budget, which is the amount that would be supported through the revenue plan in a sense that I got touched upon earlier, which would be the local contributions, the amount supported by the property taxes and local receipts and so forth. And chapter seventy funding that the district receives through the state and state aid. Again, that's the amount we're asking for is a little more than thirty-six million to be funded through that piece. And then you have the special revenue funds, federal and state. Federal grants total a little over seven-hundred-and-four-thousand dollars in this budget. Most of those are entitlement grants. Our state grants total a little more than one-point-two-million. Most of that's the special education circuit breaker program that helps offset special education costs that are eligible, tuition and transportation costs. And then the revolving fund piece is that's the user fees that we get from athletics, from extracurricular, full-day kindergarten tuition, pre, preschool, pre-K tuition, that's a little more than one-point-four-million. And then you have everything else, which is the gifts and donations, which is a little more than three-hundred-thousand.
Because I can't not say it, thirty-six billion?
Sorry about that. I saw you smiling, like, what's Scott smile again? That's it. So I think that one-one-seven should have been deleted.
I like the overreach, but.
Yeah, yeah. And I, you know what I said before the presentation, I mean, Scott's gonna look at all my numbers and find something. I thought I double-checked everything pretty good. Expenditures by the source of funds, another way of showing why I just kind of went over, so I won't, I won't kind of belabor it, but again, North Reading being the district that we are and where we stand with the state formula of chapter seventy funding, the majority of our budget is funded through the local appropriation and the local contribution. And then you have, which is the orange, then you have the, the federal and state amount, which is a smaller piece, which is the, the bottom piece of the pie. Revolving funds are a little bit greater than that, which is the darker orange. And then you have the amount that we get from state aid, which has been pretty consistent, chapter seventy at seven-million dollars. North Reading has not seen significant increases in the state, state aid and, and that's kind of where we are at with that formula. We're required to spend twenty-seven-million or twenty-eight-million by the Department of Education. We spend a lot more than that. And quite honestly, about eighty percent of districts in the Commonwealth spend more than they're required to spend, unlike any other in, in the state. So just really quickly, I, see, these are the, the revenue accounts that I mentioned earlier, that three-point, you know, plus-million dollars. So if you look at our direct costs and you look at what the user fee is working at contributing, this is kind of where we stand in that formula. So at, at one point, most of the user fee contributions were very much close to about fifty percent offset of the direct cost of that program. So just we're required, we can't take a user fee in for busing and spend it on at teachers, for classroom teachers. When you take in a user fee, it has to directly offset the direct expenses of that program. So we haven't increased user fees in a number of years, and that's been an effort and a good thing that we've been working hard at not to do. But the direct costs go up every year. So the inflation and cost of living, so that amount that the user fee generally contributes and offsets has slowly been going down. So we, like I said, a few, I remember four or five years ago, we were at about fifty percent or more, almost across the board here. In some cases now, we're down to about thirty percent or forty percent of the, of the direct costs of that program. In aggregate, we're at about thirty-nine, forty percent. So we are asking the increase next year to be at five-point-three percent. We are kind of, you can look at how much that compares to what we've actually been funded for through the town meeting, through the local appropriation over the last ten-plus years, really. The ten-year average is three-point-six-five percent. We are asking next year for five-point-three, which is very similar to what we ended up getting funded last year at five-point-two. But it is overall, it is greater than the ten-year average. So I just really quickly, you can kind of read this on your own, but I think we work hard at cost avoidance measures. So I think we, we work to purchase off state bid list to save on, get the largest educational discount whenever possible on supplies, materials, equipment. We work hard to control our operational costs, utilities, the natural gas. It was a great question by Janine earlier, and I think the fact that we take part in the power options purchasing consortium and locking gas rates when it's favorable to do so has really benefited us well, and we've done that in this situation. Sometimes, you know, you're, you're kind of watching the market, market to see when it makes sense to lock. It's never, you know, you're always kind of struggling with that, but I think we did make the right decision to lock in earlier. And then we always kind of regulate in the occupancy schedules, lighting controls, to try to save energy as much as possible. We work really closely with RMLD to participate in their peak demand reduction program. So when the demand rate for electricity and gas is going to be at its peak, we kind of shred our load and drop and, and that helps us save, save money and not get additional charges through the demand rates. So we've been a very high participator in that program with them. Special education, you know, it's a big driver. It's a big cost of the budget. It's a big piece of that pie. We continue to commit to try to keep students in our schools through design customized program whenever appropriate. So we are always looking at our own programming. We are a member of SEEM Collaborative and North Shore Consortium, which helps us when appropriate, have students either attend those collaboratives or also tap into those services and professional development at a cheaper cost than it would be for those students to go elsewhere if we were not a member of these two collaboratives. We are, our special education transportation model is shared through SEEM Collaborative, which is about fourteen other member districts of SEEM. So when we have students going to an outside district, they may be on, more times than not, they're on the same special education van as a Stonem, Reading, or Melrose student. And when that is the case, we, we save and share that cost with them. So we've done our cost-benefit models, and we've shown that on the annual average savings of that transportation model is about fifty-thousand dollars. So we'll, we continue to participate in that. Food service program has done very well over the last number of years, so we pursue all available funding in federal, through the USDA federal reimbursement program. We're continuing to do that. Athletics, I think the purchase and the use of the two multi-function school activity buses to reduce transportation costs has been substantial this year. And I, I think I mentioned last year during the capital presentations that receiving a second vehicle was a game changer for us in terms of controlling that cost. And that's certainly been the case, proven to be the case this year. And then through maintenance and operations, certainly, we work hard to, you know, bring work in, in-house when, when we can. We, through the capital program, we have access to a tool cat, which has main, which has made our snow removal costs. We've definitely saved on labor, saved on outside contract work by using that tool cat this year. That's, there's real savings there. And then we're just, you know, constant vigilance to our, our daily operations. Long-term initiatives, LED lighting program has, has led to a savings. We won't reap the full benefit of that until after that five-year lease is kind of paid off, but we're, we're getting closer. And then we continue to pursue solar options as well. So what can we conclude from the budget? This is in my file slides. We, we certainly, we meet our, we, what does this budget do? It meets our contractual obligations with employees and employee unions. Increases our fixed operational costs, so it meets our, allows us to address the necessary increases for operational costs, like busing utilities, contractual services. It maintains or adds staff to maintain educational sound teacher ratios, especially at the elementary level. So the addition of those four positions, two teachers, two paras, again, is, is a cost, but it helps us maintain the, the ratios of, of class sizes and student-to-teacher that we're striving for. Enhances academic support systems to address any areas of learning loss and to ensure this proactive approach to intervention strategies are there and available at, really at all levels, so that the, the enhancement to the interventionness at the elementary and middle school level is, is vital to that objective. Maintains adequate health and safety services for all students, staff, and the school community. The continuation of the school, the Florida School Nurse is important. Number four, addresses social, emotional, and mental health of, of needs of all our students across the districts. So the addition of the school adjustment counselor, the continuation of those that are in the ESSER grant, as well as the, the additional position that's being requested. And then the curriculum leadership model with the district to support our, all of our educators in curriculum instruction and assessment strategies with really the curriculum, the teaching and learning coordinator. Would be a big, big piece of that, that initiative. This budget also assumes the continuation of the district's one-to-one program with devices in K, K-through-twelve. Certainly with eye of sanitation, health, and technology, we are kind of living in a new environment, so it continues those initiatives into the future. And then it allows us to meet our, our operational needs at all fives, five campuses. So where do we go? This is the beginning stages. As we know, we have busy six to seven weeks ahead of us. Ongoing discussions with the finance planning team. We met this morning. As of this morning, available revenues currently stand at thirty-four-million-four-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-and-nineteen dollars or a zero-point-five-percent increase. So I know that's alarming. We've been here before, but it is an alarming number, given that we're requesting five-point-three percent, and they're, they're saying we have zero-point-five-percent available. So there's a lot of work to do. We've, we've certainly been here before, but you know, there's definitely, there's definitely some challenges and work to be, to be done. There's a budget webinar on March twenty-fifth. There's a school committee budget workshop. I believe that actually changed.
You gonna discuss that?
Yeah. Well, well, that date may have changed. We'll get the right date, April fourth, I believe. And the public hearing is on April eleventh, so on April eleventh is when we'll attempt to, hopefully, we're looking at a much lower number and we'll attempt to kind of bridge the gap between available revenues, be closer to doing that. School committee is not due to vote the budget until May second. We have finance committee on May fourth. The annual town meeting, has there been a date? I, I couldn't find one. I don't know if that's been officially set yet. Yeah, June, I thought it was June fourteenth, but I don't, I'm not sure it has. And then we continue to await state budget actions. Right now, the governors released their budget, but it still has to go to the House and the Senate. So we'll wait, we'll wait for those and then we'll continue to, this is the beginning of us kind of getting the budget out public and soliciting feedback and having our conversations from subcommittees and to see where we go from here. That being said, I'll turn it over to any questions.
Michael, since we, since we have a fair number of people online and some people here, can you talk about a little bit the role of the public hearing?
Yeah.
As opposed to this meeting, for instance?
Yeah, absolutely. So what this, what this typically what we've done is the preliminary presentation is we don't really take a lot of questions or dialogue. This is sort of the beginning of the process. We want to kind of present the budget, and at this point, it's really, to me, tonight is the process of the administration and the superintendent sort of presenting their priorities and initiatives, as we know, driven by our strategic plan to the school committee, and it's our process of sort of handing the budget, you know, over to the school committee to start that deliberation process that, that will begin and will take place over the next seven weeks. The public hearing is really on April eleventh, so now is, is an opportunity for folks to kind of really come to the presentation, take part. It's a lot, much more of an interactive session. It's a shorter presentation tonight. I don't know, it was probably about forty-five minutes. It's more of a fifteen-minute overview to say you already kind of got the, the detailed presentation. There's been many materials online between now and then. So it's more of a fifteen-minute kind of update, quick overview, and then it's much more of a back-and-forth discussion deliberation, question-and-answer session on April eleventh. We don't, it's an opportunity for the school committee to hear from the public, to take notes, to take feedback. We're not gonna, we don't take any action tonight or that evening, but we take a lot of feedback. And then when we have our second school committee budget workshop following that public hearing, that's when, you know, changes could happen and, and by the time the budget's voted, a few weeks later, you know, they would have that feedback.
Yep. Thank you.
Just to share, June sixth was the town meeting.
June, yeah, okay.
I was gonna say that partly. So first of all, Mr. Connolly, thank you for the presentation. I like the new slides and so, looks really good and good content as always. Again, we're not going to specific line items really at this level, but just a few quick things to add. Number one, you know, I, I think you underestimated or didn't, didn't point out as much here. I mean, you do a lot in finding grants as well. We see how tight everything is, and you talk at multiple meetings about how often you're applying for grants and do you know the total of grants that we were awarded this year from those applications?
Oh, I, we're over two-million dollars this particular year.
I mean, and-
There's a lot of additional grants. They're sort of one-time in nature, so they're not kind of reflected as carryover, but.
And that's funny that if you sat on your hands, we just wouldn't get.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's the important.
And, and utilizing the funds that are available, you know, I mean, some of the funds become available and it's first come, first served. And so, I mean, one thing I, I just think is worth noting to everybody here is that, you know, you are always first come, and so you're, you are always there when we can get things, and we are limited in the town that we're in and, and state aid that we can get. So I just appreciate the effort that you put in to even get us to the point where we're about one-point-five-million short right now for the budget that we want.
Right.
But I think that's worth noting. Another thing worth noting is we've, have all contracts settled. And that's not the case in a lot of districts right now. And, you know, it, it is a big increase year over year, you know, but to try to keep staff and to try to be fair to the people that are working here, I think it's something that bears mentioning that, you know, we don't have people working on contracts that expired a year, two years, three years ago. And so that's part of what's in here right now, but it's all settled contracts. One thing that I will, with two other points I'll make, you said we've been here before. The only thing I'll say about that is we've been here before, but it is different this year. A lot of times we're here because there are, for example, every year we assume that we're going to put in one-point-two-million from the free cash from the year before. And a lot of times we start off by saying we're not going to do that, and we don't show that, and then we later put it in. This year, we're not doing that, and we're one-point-five-million short. And that's, that's worth noting. I mean, it's not that we're just holding back revenues right now. I mean, we are short a lot of money right now, and a big piece of that is health insurance. You know, I mean, normally we, we hold a spot for about seven-and-a-half-percent increase. In the last few years, we've been able to, you know, nibble away a little bit and maybe do five percent and save a little bit, and every one percent's about sixty-thousand dollars, and this year, the proposed increase is about twice what we, what we set aside. And that's a big piece of this. And now we're fortunate because we've had good leadership in this town for a while. We've had people that have speculated that this might happen, and so we have a few different tools that are available with, you know, a PFA and, and so various things to help close it for this year. But we're not going to get to the point where we're, to close the gap, we're actually only doing four-and-a-half percent and getting one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand. I mean, we're going to be lucky to get down to seven-and-a-half percent, and we're going to use one-time revenues and use things that usually are put away and were used for other things to do that. And so I just think people that are watching should understand that's the biggest challenge we have right, right now, like.
Sure.
I think a lot of people anticipate like, oh, every year they have a budget gap at this point in time, but it is very different than it was in years past. That's just my opinion on this, but, you know, and it's not that anyone's trying to play hardball. I think in years past, there's been a little bit of gamesmanship being played. I don't feel like that from the finance planning team this year. I feel like people are really being honest, but when, when health insurance is going up double digits, when inflation is happening, when, when all these things are happening and revenues only go up two-and-a-half percent, it's a losing situation, and it's a, it's a big challenge and something that we have to work through. And again, we have some tools available and we, you know, have had good leadership and have reserve funds, but it's a big problem if this continues. Just my overall soapbox moment, so I'll throw that out there. Dr. Daley?
Like, good, Michael, great presentation as always. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to say for the committee and for the public that are listening as well, you know, know, we, our strategy is always looking forward. So when we talk about interventionists, we talk about our tiered system of support and response for students that are struggling. And we certainly see those positions in there. But they're also, you know, I think we've done a nice job of identifying positions that meet our vision, but also directly address the impacts of COVID. And we see that in our ESSER funds, which follow the Title I formula, which in some ways I understand, in other ways, I feel COVID hit every town the same way, right? We, I understand that certainly some cities were affected much more, right? Inner cities, urban, urban communities, but not quite the same way that other funding hits, right? So to have a district, some districts in the 400,000s, slightly larger towns getting 4 million to 10 million, and your large towns getting $40 million, just to put things in perspective, for that money to follow that exact same formula when we've also got all of our kids, were not in school last year full-time, when all of our kids are experiencing mental health issues, I think it's, I think there could have been a different way to do that to make it a little bit more equitable. We're, we're in a challenging position with these positions that we're looking for. So luckily, we have some of the ESSER funds to support that. But those other positions that are in that, you know, NRPS vision, that are the counselors, that are the additional counselors, we certainly are promoting those positions, not only for the immediate needs, but to save us down the road. Because when we can't meet those needs in-house early, it certainly, it certainly can snowball, as we know, as, as things go on. And the availability of mental health counseling outside of the schools is not sufficient at this time. And so the more that we can do to support those positions. So I just ask that we always keep in mind, not only that the NRPS vision that we always have, but also our sort of COVID recovery position that these positions entail. So I just wanted to make sure to advocate for that.
Any other comments, thoughts, questions? Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
So, thank you very much, Michael.
Thank you.
And moving on, we have the superintendent's mid-year goals update. Chris, you want to lead us on this?
Yes, I'll do that. This will probably take about as long as Michael's presentation. So this will be quick. For those that aren't too-
Familiar?
Familiar, thank you. Familiar with the process. Sorry, I'm stalling for time. Now, for those who aren't too familiar with the process, superintendent goes through, in a cycle, there's a formative and a summative evaluation. This is the formative evaluation. Really, it's just us looking at the goals that Dr. Daly has outlined, looking at some of the evidence that he's shown to indicate where his progress is. And for us to simply give a thumbs up or a thumbs down, he's either moving in the right direction, he's not, or for some reason, he hasn't started yet. And that's, that's kind of the tenor of what this is. It's very generalized. And then, of course, we'll have a much more involved meeting when it comes to time for the summative evaluation. In short, Dr. Daly is on target for all of his goals. I, I could read through each of these in great detail, but I think what I'll do is highlight the comments that different members of the committee have shared and, and point out a couple of the things that Dr. Daly has done over the course of the year that he's identified. And I think that'll, that'll be sufficient unless people have further questions. So as a general overall assessment, Dr. Daly appears to be on target with all his goals. While COVID has been the main focus of the public and has involved a great deal of time, Dr. Daly has continued to focus on the education of students in North Reading. Dr. Daly has kept the public aware of changing guidance and has always had North Reading positioned to move into the next phase of the pandemic by completing the work necessary. For example, as soon as at-home testing was an option, he had signed North Reading up for the program. Dr. Daly also has put a focus on addressing educational gaps that are being seen, and the budget requests reflect that. Another comment, Dr. Daly has conducted his responsibilities admirably. He seems to keep all of the big rocks in focus while dealing with the small pebbles and sand, the shifts, the shifts through all while keeping the public not only notified, but also responding to their concerns. Excuse me. I'm just trying to think if, if, well, I'm presenting this mostly to you. Would you like me to go through his goals, which we've seen before, and kind of read into each one?
I don't know if we want to or not. Do you want to go through? I mean, I think you can maybe summarize very quickly what they are, just to remind people and just-
Sure.
I don't think you have to go through where we're at, but just say we're on-
Appreciate. And yeah, you keep, it's really just binary. Just, he's pacing well or he's not. So the first goal, student learning goal, Dr. Daly is working to improve, to create the conditions necessary for all students to achieve at the highest levels as we return to full in-person school, with a goal that each school will present updated school improvement plans aligned with NRPS 2025 by the end of this current school year. We find that he is on target for that goal. Additionally, a second student learning goal is to ensure the highest level of effective strategic leadership for the North Reading Public Schools by engaging in, or continuing to engage in and support professional development activities to further his own skills. And he is also on pace for that goal. He has, the rest are district improvement goals. One is to use his findings from the first two years in his job to develop the new strategic plan, NRPS 2025. And his next goal is, excuse me, to continue to prepare the district for the challenges related to COVID-19. Third district improvement goal is to focus on his communication through social media, his blog, and other technologies. And lastly, his fourth goal in this category is to continue to support a district-wide investigation of social justice and equity for all students and staff. And for all four of his goals, the consensus is that he is on target. Overall, I think excellent work so far, and we look forward to what's coming.
Thank you very much. Chris, any comments, thoughts? I mean, I would agree. I think you're on target, Dr. Daly.
Please don't leave.
Okay. Great job, all seriousness. And I know there's a lot to do, but you've been on top of everything, and so it's good.
Yeah, I would just say, I know in my job, when a new thing comes down the pike that I have to do, it takes me forever to even get my mind around it and start acting on it. And the way you guys jump on things is one of the reasons why we're in the shape we're in. So it is a good job.
Okay.
We have an incredible team. And I'll just say, this will segue a little bit into our next point as well. When we talk about the goals at the end with the diversity, equity, inclusion, and that being a big role, we heard earlier some parents that are concerned about that. And I think part of my job, which I have worked into my goals and into my, and into the strategic plan, which we'll see, is to engage the community in these conversations because there's a great spectrum of understanding. We've had presentations, obviously, from students and from mothers who want to make sure we have clubs and activities and make sure that we're all centered. And there's people, such as those who spoke tonight, who feel very strongly in a different direction. I think it's critically important that we all work together to really talk about specifics and things that we're particularly interested in worrying more about, what is actually in the curriculum, and not speaking generalities about terms such as indoctrination, not understanding what we're actually talking about. And this is not North Reading, as I think we're all aware. That's a large part of this being discussed really across the country, across the state. And so we're helping to put that in. So that's really, just to be clear, that I do respect and understand that there's differences of opinion. I think that's part of the work that I have to do is to try to educate the community, make people on. And I think, as we saw even through the visioning process for NRPS 2025, we talked about equity, people had questions about it. By the end of those meetings, any of those conversations, a lot were in disagreement, and that's really certainly still going to go.
Okay. Thank you very much. Move on to school committee goals update. Janine, are you leading us on this?
Well, yes. I believe a couple of meetings ago, Chris was absent, and we had kind of talked about each one's goals that we had planned for ourselves. And I, for one, had not yet started it. And, yes, kindergarten is kind of in the budget, so she's done well. You've been working with Brad Jones, and you've been working with NOR Cam.
Theoretically, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, and, and I just, just kind of rephrase this real quick. Years past, what we used to do is just have a whole set of goals, and they were like, fund the budget and make sure the schools are open. I mean, they're, they're very, they're very broad goals. And so this year, we wanted to, just like we asked Dr. Daly to really narrow down to three or four or five things that they were going to really focus on, we, we decided on sort of five things we each wanted to, we wanted to focus the committee on, and we each were supposed to lead the committee in one of those five.
Right.
And so, can you update again? You want to just update everybody again?
Sure. I'm reaching out to-
What's your goal?
To reach out to the mask, I believe Glenn Kuchar, to have a meeting on the legalities of what we need to do as a school committee.
Have you done that?
I have thought very hard about it.
So not, not on target?
That is not on target for the first school committee goal.
That is not on target. But I am hoping to have something scheduled-
You only have a few more months left, so-
For the end of April, early May. It might be very beneficial for new school committee members to-
Interesting when you schedule this.
To, well, even if it's before the vote, maybe to invite the candidates in to sit down so that they might have a glimpse into, into it. So-
Yep. It's pretty good.
Yeah. And very strategic as to why I am not on target.
Is it, what, what was your goal?
I feel more like a sponsor than the person who does the work on this one, but it's our collective goal around reducing the fees for kindergarten over the years and ultimately doing away with it. And Mr. Connelly has done most of the work there. And as you can see in the budget update, we are continuing to do that and reducing it potentially for next year.
And, yeah, and again, I mean, that's, that's also under the umbrella of diversity, equity, inclusion. That's one of the things we're talking about is, you know, we're, there's only a couple dozen communities in the entire state that has a fee for full-day kindergarten, and we're one of the highest amongst the few. That still happens. So, Chris, what's your goal this year? Or what's the school committee goal that you're leading, I should say?
So it's to explore the ways to be more involved in the district's exploration of the topics of equity, diversity, and inclusion. So Dr. Daly and I have, have met. I'm not nearly as good a procrastinator as Janine, so-
Nobody is.
I'm joking. We met earlier today to have this. But we met to, to discuss this. And, you know, the conversations are very much figuring out what role the school committee should play in, in this huge umbrella topic of equity, diversity, inclusion. The schools got many initiatives that are kind of in the seedling process that they're, they're developing. Recently have hired India Barrows to come in as a, as a kind of a joint position with several other communities. So there's a lot of steps being made. And we were kind of discussing the big picture of how does the school committee fit into that. And the, I think one of the big important elements of that is having us be an opportunity for the public to understand a bit of what's going on when we use these terms. What does that actually look like in the school? And, and for us to kind of be the, the ones that help disseminate that information so that it's not all on Dr. Daly's extremely good communication skills to have to do that. Yeah.
Rich?
Michael is around the, helping to continue the increased participation we've had in meetings that we've seen during, during the COVID pandemic by people being able to see it through their, to log on and see these meetings online and even participate online. As we come out of the pandemic and come away from the governor's emergency order and the legislation that has been passed, the emergency legislation that has passed, we still want to be able to offer, you know, remote participation, especially to members of the community, to some degree, to the extent that the law allows for members of the committee when necessary, if they happen to be traveling for work or whatever. But especially for members of the community, it's a, it's a great way to increase participation. And so, working out some of the technical details, like we, you know, ran into some difficulties tonight. And as far as progress, not too much. I know that Dr. Daly and Mr. Connelly have been working with NOR Cam. They've, they've made some improvements to the NOR Cam feed, and we just need to sort of finalize the technical details or what we're going to do on the, on the web feed, I guess would be the best way to say that.
And I will say, on my end, I've, I met with Mr. Connelly earlier this year. I have not talked with Representative Jones much. I mean, he just said that if there's something specifically we need, we should reach out to him. But I did make contact with a company which is in the consortium, which was one of bid with the consortium that we, that we are a part of. So if we wanted to pick up the solar power, obviously we could. They're giving us an official proposal. I did call them after the last meeting and just was told they're still waiting on RMLD because essentially, the way that it would have to work is whatever they create in terms of energy, we'd either have to use, which doesn't make that much sense to us, or will be stored in a battery, will be sold back to RMLD's grid. So they need to work out with RMLD how much energy they can take, they can take. And so that's a long process to figure that out. But that's where they're at. They've done some models of where they could put solar panels and trying to figure that out. But they need to work with RMLD to figure out how much energy we can sell. So that's our update, and I would just push the committee a little bit that we do need to set a good example and, you know, finish the task that we have assigned to ourselves. So. Okay. Any comments, questions? Okay, now the real fun part. Minutes. We have one minute.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes open session of February 7th, 2022, as written.
Second.
Okay, any changes?
Not that I saw.
Mr. Recording Secretary, did you find anything? Okay.
I just can't handle Dr. Daly. I'm getting some spelling stuck right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post unanimous? Any other budget update, Mr. Connelly, or?
So there was an update on FY '22. So there's a report that reflects activity through the end of February. You know, I know I've been presenting these reports monthly. There's really not a lot of new information from the previous breakdown, but I, I think the overall message is that we continue to, to monitor all the kind of expense and payroll lines very closely. Most items are trending within budgeted ranges. We, you know, have had a few, you know, surprises on the maintenance end and special education end, but because we were conservative and set ourselves up in good position by prepaying special education tuitions at the end of fiscal '21 with some available funding at that time, we've been able to address any of these, you know, new costs or unexpected expenses within the budget this year. And, you know, overall, I think as we sort of approach the, the final quarter of, of the fiscal year and another few weeks, I, you know, I think we'll be reviewing some of the utility lines and some areas and see where some additional savings in repurposing could, could be done to, to help us leverage and kind of address maybe any, some of the challenges that we have next year. And that's, that's sort of what we've been, been, been doing. But overall, I think we're, we're in good condition. What's put us in, in, in a really solid condition, I mean, it was alluded to earlier by Mr. Buckley, was the fact that we, we had, indeed, we have been aggressive at going after all available funding sources through COVID, the COVID-19 pandemic has made available. And sometimes there are items that you have to just kind of apply for, and there, as long as you apply and dot the i's and cross the t's, the funding will be there. But sometimes you have to kind of be aggressive and, and complete the paperwork, and it's competitive. And we've had some success this year in, in receiving some variety of additional grants through areas that would help us, you know, fund some contractual services and therapeutic services in the area of special education, areas that allowed us to help reimburse some summer, summer budget, summer school expenses in those types of areas. So we've continued to do that. We've been able to receive some additional technology equipment, so we'll, we continue to do that. And I think we're in good, good financial standing. So we'll, we continue to do that. And I think we're in good, good financial standing as we enter the final quarter of the fiscal year.
Any comments, questions? Everything looked good. Thank you very much, Mr. Connolly. Staffing, any update at the time, Dr. Daley? Bids and donations?
Looks like we have a couple. I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $700 from the North Reading High School Hornet Hall of Fame. These funds are to benefit the three elementary schools as follows. The Little School, $300, the Hood School, $200, and the Batch Elder School, $200. These funds are from the Turkey Trot Road Race.
I second.
And his commentary will just point out, as always, the Little School is the highest because Little School won. They've had more participation. I don't know what's going on at the batch over there, Diana, but pointing out, I think it's an annual tradition now. Okay. Any, any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Unanimous.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $100 for Mr. and Mrs. John Meany. These funds are to benefit the track and field program at the high school.
I second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Unanimous.
That's it.
Thank you very much. Subcommittee updates. Finance planning team met a couple of times, including this morning. Talked a lot about it, but Mr. McGowan, anything to add?
Yeah, I think we talked about the, the key point, which is the increase in health, in the health plan cost, which at the top level is, is quite a high number. So, you know, more to come on that as they finalize what that number is and, and come up with plans to, you know, whatever the, it seems like to be sensible plans to offset some of those increases, and then we'll have a better sense of where we stand. But other than that, I think.
I think, the only thing I would add also is like, we're showing in the school side here, but I think we're going to have a similar challenge on the municipal side as well.
Yeah.
I think it's worth noting because they have an increased need in some positions as well because of restructuring, retirement, just a lot of things going on there as well. And so this is not just a school issue, it's a town issue. And I don't know, they're starting their hearings, but it's a bad situation right now.
Yep. I mean.
We'll get through it.
And a lot can change between now and then, but we'll see.
Okay. Athletic Subcommittee.
Well, I snuck in about a half hour into the meeting. They were talking about the winter season update, the eighth grade waiver, maybe meeting to be done on one of the athletics.
Field hockey again, or?
The lighting project phase is almost done, and I think we're under budget on it, if I remember correctly.
Correct.
The scoreboard has a couple of quotes coming in. They're fine tuning what they actually want to go on the, the scoreboard. Different like, timing issues, like showing the actual time plane versus the time, like kind of coming down, you know, if you have a 10-minute quarter, instead of it counting down, you see it, the actual time.
Yeah, I think it was the play clock, debating whether or not it's worth it to add, add a module that would show the countdown of the play, the actual play clock in football.
For some sports.
Yeah.
And on the, on the scoreboard, is it, we have the scoreboard, but we have to install it, and we have to get the?
No, we're just preliminary. We have some designs and quotes, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. The message board is coming. It should be here.
Oh, that's what we have. We have the message.
So the messaging board was, unfortunately, it was supposed to come at the end of February. It got delayed two weeks through, I think, just shipping with a variety of, I think mid-March we're looking at now.
Okay. Yeah, because I, at the time, you said it would should be in, in two weeks.
Correct.
So it was delayed another two. Okay. And then the storage shed, which is going to sit out near the tennis courts, will be like 32 by eight, almost like a tanker container type thing. And it'll be eight by eight for tennis, and the rest would be for multipurpose theater. And performing arts. Yeah. Oh, yes. And we had talked about painting it and having the logo and stuff on it. And then we were talking about with the lights being on the multipurpose field, trying to make sure that it doesn't get overused so that it doesn't get ruined. And that's pretty much all I have. So I don't know what happened the first half hour. I'm assuming budget maybe.
There was a presentation by the baseball coach, Eric Archibald.
Okay.
About making some upgrades to Cary Park, and particularly expanding the backstop, replacing the backstop and expanding it, and allowing, allowing for kind of a more professional kind of see-through backstop area that's expanded with some concrete kind of padding that would additionally, additionally allow for some stands to be placed that is just kind of a more professional, comfortable place for seating and spectating the park. So he presented some plans. They looked good. The design certainly looked good. He had been working with a contractor on the design and, and the price. So I think what we're, we're really kind of at is kind of what would be the funding strategy to, to kind of make that a reality is where we stand. But certainly everyone agreed that it had merit, and it was a good, a good design. It would be a significant upgrade to the facility and certainly for the spectators, being able to view, view the game.
Safety.
Safety too, yeah.
Supposedly just the fence is a certain height now, and we're all playing higher with the mesh.
Yeah.
A lot of which you see at the park.
Yep.
They showed a similar area of high schools that have similar designs. So there's some funding partners involved. There's some interest from.
Correct. Yep.
And you could move some of the existing seating back behind there as well, so there would be.
Has there been any discussion on the turf field? I know that was an issue last year. We were talking about it. How, where is that at right now?
So it's actually, so that stands with the capital improvements planning committee. It is a request for funding next, next year. So the committee, the capital committee hasn't started to rank those requests. I don't know currently where it stands, but it was presented by Parks and Rec to the committee for consideration for funding for next year. Unfortunately, the Hillview is not able to contribute like they did previously. They do have $100,000 from a grant or some program that Brad Jones, I believe, received for them. So that, it's a $500,000 cost. They've since reduced that down to 400. Quite honestly, there was some debate at the last meeting about whether or not to support the $14,000 cost for the logo, the North Reading Hornet logo, which would be in the middle of the turf. Quite honestly, the CIP, collectively, the CIPC feels like to admit that because it's not there now.
Right.
So that would reduce the cost of 386. I don't know if the committee has a feeling on that. I can take it, certainly take that back at the next meeting. I sort of certainly like, would love to have it there, quite honestly, but that's where it stands now.
Any thoughts, I mean?
It would be nice, but.
I mean, again, money's money, but at the same time, it's like, you don't, I don't, I'm not in favor of doing things poorly to try to make them cheap either. And so, if it was there before and if it looks nice.
No, it currently is not there.
Oh, it's not there.
It is not there. So it would, it would be, yeah.
It would be an addition to it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I can understand their point of view, but as you say, you want to make it look nice and be.
They sort of asked where we, I can certainly, I can bring it back. I kind of said, our preference would be to have it. And I certainly understand that it's a ticket, it's a relatively not a small ticket item.
Yeah. I think that's true. I think it's, I think our preference is to have it. I think that'd be nice.
Maybe, maybe Hillview can say, we're giving $86,000 for the project, and also, we're going to spend $14,000 on, to add in the logo. So, yeah. So that's, that's where it stands.
Okay. Yes. Oh, there's a comment. Ms. Clooney says she's against adding a logo if there's still sports fees. So, but just to be clear also, this is Parks and Rec that owns a field there. And so, this is through the capital improvement committee. This is not school funds. This is through, this is Parks and Rec requesting funds through the capital improvement account, which is a different usage. And so, different sports teams use it, and a lot of different booster clubs support the maintenance of it through the fees that they're charged for the field as well. Okay. Anything else on Athletic Subcommittee?
Nope, that was it.
Subcommittee schedule coming up. Athletic Subcommittee will meet March 9th at 12:00 PM. Fine Arts Subcommittee will meet March 9th at 3:15 PM. I did have a parent ask me about, something about, about fine arts, and I suggested they bring it through, Ms. Kane, to the Fine Arts Subcommittee with some, it was funding of the system, I think. I just said that was probably the appropriate place to discuss that. The finance planning team will meet March 25th at 8:15 AM, in person, actually. Administrative report. Dr. Daley, anything to share?
I believe most of what I was going to share, Sharon, I wanted to update on the controlling market that we can cap on, which I think she highlighted. We did a lot of upcoming events. I mentioned many things in person, things that we had handled back in 2020 that we postponed. We will be hosting the National Theater Guild for the next couple of weeks. Notorious, just to highlight again, scored the highest total that has ever been scored in the competition. They're going on to their second competition this weekend on the 12th, and hopefully they'll be in the top of the year. Just fantastic. I don't know, maybe you saw that you said the National Anthem had the, had the boys' basketball game the other night. I thought it was one of the better anthems like I've ever heard, not just, not just here. I thought it was, it was wonderful. And, you know, so many of our sports teams competing live. I know there's a game tonight. There's probably a score that I haven't seen. But the quote of the girls' and the boys' hockey and basketball programs all went to their first round. I want to share on that.
Thank you very much. And again, to point out again, I think Chivi winning the Coca-Cola Scholarship. Like, I don't know, it just sounds 150 students in the whole country received it. It's pretty impressive. So. Any correspondence other than, that was, that was hand-delivered to us tonight? So upcoming meetings. I know we have to talk about one of these, but March 21st, we have a meeting back here, the high school presentation. We have a budget workshop coming up, and there's a proposal to change that to April 4th at 8:45 AM. Is that correct? And discussion on that?
Yeah. Thank you all for being flexible around me not being able to make the Wednesday afternoon time.
Better bring some good comments. We're changing it for you.
So I, the, the Monday morning, I can make that time, but, but I'll have to leave at 10:15, which is the time that's reflected in the schedule. I won't be able to stay later than that, just as a.
Virtual option? I can only.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm actually expecting. Sorry. Yeah. Yeah. I'll have to be in here by 10:30.
That works for me, Dr. Daley.
Just for the 21st, I just wanted to note, I guess this could be part of my agenda as well, and will be in the future. But I'll be attending out of state, the Subs and East Coalition at the National Conference in Longwood, Minnesota. So I will not be in person for the 21st. But I believe everybody else, Michael will be present that, I believe. And just so we're correct, we can also handle a lot of technical issues. So I would be virtual for the 21st.
We can probably screw up the technology on our, on our own, so. And then April 11th, we have a, another meeting, and that's the budget, that's the official budget hearing and the Little School presentation that night.
Yeah.
Perfect. Any other comments, questions, thoughts? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
I so second.
Comments, questions, wishes to keep going? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Unanimous. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.